Today is January 6th. This is our first, first regular meeting for the year. Hope everybody had a great holiday season and so we start this year ready to get the ground running. Seeing we do have a quorum in the absence of Councilmember Johnny Eberhard, who reported that he's doing a whole lot better, looks forward to joining us. So noting that we have a quorum, I will open this meeting up to conduct official business of Fort Payne. Today I'm gonna ask Councilmember Leon Brewer to lead us in the pledge after the invocation. I'll do the invocation, so let's just go ahead and get started. Let's pray. I always thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for this opportunity that you have given us each to serve this city. I always pray that in this meeting that your humility will be with us and that we will make decisions that's pleasing to you. Thank you for each member. Thank you for the hard work that they put in this past year. Thank you that you allowed Johnny to still be with us. Thank you for everything, Lord, that you have blessed us with. Today we ask your blessings for your wisdom as we go forward. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. President. I brought a flag, so if you all will join me now in the pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. Just a little, a few notes today. This is our first opportunity doing this. I think it will go well. If, to keep us from talking over each other, we've asked each council member to raise their hands when they have a comment. I will recognize that person. And I ask each other council member not to speak until that person has yielded their time back to the floor, at which time I will recognize the next person. So having said that, we'll move into the agenda. So hope everyone has an opportunity to read the minutes of the last meeting. So I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as read. Leon?
Yes, Mr. President. I make a motion to accept those minutes.
Motion by Leon. That was second.
Second.
Second by John. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, let's go, let's do the committee report, starting from my left sitting at the council chair. So start with the mayor. On to John, then myself, on to Leon, and then on to Phillip, in that order. So Mayor, do you have anything to report?
Yes, I got an update today on the recreation, Roosevelt Recreation Center. Robin says that the participation is slowly starting to increase. Membership and usage are down due to COVID. And we're, we run a promotion this month where if you join in January, that will be waiving that enrollment fee. She says youth basketball practice and games start back this week. T-ball, baseball, and softball registration will start next week. And it'll run through February the 12th. Practices begin in March, the games start in April. Parks and parks are, the reservations are starting to come in for the spring usage of the parks. We've also been awarded a $10,500 grant from NRPA to be a pilot program and offer a walk with ease virtually. She'll have a press release with more information coming soon on that for the, for the Rec Department. I will speak briefly to about the demolition of the old hospital, which will be part of our Public Works Department. But I, I will say that when I report at the end of the day. That's all I have.
Good. John? Any reports?
At the sanitation department, I talked to Patrick a little bit about a problem that I've been getting a lot of calls in, and that's in the feeding the garbage cans back, or giving the garbage cans off of the streets after, after garbage service. And, and talked to Patrick, as far as we know, we don't have an ordinance for that. We may want to talk about that in a work session. It's, you know, we got to think about how pretty Fort Payne was. That the city employees did a good job and the merchants during Christmas. And you rather have some of these neighborhoods and it's, it's dead if the trash is laying out and the trash cans laying in the street for a week. So I would suggest that we, excuse me, do a work session and bring that up. Maybe we want to look at it, an ordinance or something like that. As far as the sanitation department right now, just waiting on equipment and they be, be approved. And they're in good shape right now. They don't have any urgent needs.
Alright, thanks, John. Over the holiday season in sanitation department, we had some complaints, Mayor, about trash being in different locations. And then we kind of talked about it and our teams picked that up. Where do we need to go forward with that? Talking to the sanitation committee team now. Can we, can we adopt some type of, what's our plan? Do they just need to call you or call us and we'll put our teams on it? Or is there any plans to address these problems?
They're welcome to call me. Let me know when there's a problem. And I will call Patrick and make sure that that is taken care of going forward. If you see something that's been out for more than the allotted time that it should be there, usually there's a reason why that it's like that. And I can get with Patrick and make sure that that gets taken care of.
John?
I think about that too. We need to, we need probably to get our media folks to help us spread the word about what is going to be picked up as a regular service and what's going to be charged. Because, you know, I know most of the construction people are probably aware that they, that they're responsible for getting this stuff taken away. So I don't know that the homeowner knows that they're, they're actually going to get charged for some of the stuff that people are putting out on the streets. But, you know, we can't, you can't lay there for two weeks waiting. Let's try to publicize that, what the, what the policy is and just keep pushing it and make these folks aware that there's a procedure to get this thing cared of.
Mayor?
I've actually talked with Patrick and I'm gonna be trying to get put out on social media and work with our news outlets and get some, lots of bullet points put out there of things. One is like making sure that your garbage is in a trash bag and not just loose garbage that you put into a garbage can. Because there's a lot of garbage that's just put into a garbage can and it's not in a bag. When that happens, you have to take, run the risk of when it gets in a garbage truck, it flying out and littering our community. So that's one way that citizens can help and make sure they put their loose trash in a plastic bag and put it in the garbage.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Oh, just wanted to reiterate to the teams, the chairmen of the committees, please be sure to relay any concerns that involves the employees to the mayor. And you guys will work on it. And for all of the committee chairs that are not on the committees, please try to utilize that committee chair if you have a comment. Case in point, John is the chairman of the sanitation department. So if there's an issue, please contact John and the mayor so that team can get together and try to resolve it, rather than us trying to go out and, and step over them so we can keep them involved. So if you would, just please keep that in mind as we go forward. That's, that's my segment. That's what I'm gonna do. So going to Leon.
Thank you. The main thing we have going on at the fire department is their washing machine that washes their turnout equipment. We're having to replace that. So we are going to purchase a new washing machine. It has to be a specific one for that turnout gear. And that's all I had to report from them.
Leon is, so that's, that's one of the items that would not be considered in the budget, but it would be like an emergency purchase, right?
Yes. They have a budget for appliances, but it's not enough to cover that. And, you know, who knows? They may need something else, so.
John?
It's basically an OSHA requirement. There, there's certain guidelines they have to use to clean that equipment because of carcinogens. So yeah, it's a big deal and they have the habit, but, you know, we just can't go loads and get one. But I talked to Ryan too, and he got an $8,000 machine basically for $4,000 installed. So we, we did, we did say something, but it was hacked to. There was no, there was no, let's look at the budget.
Any thoughts? Alright, Phillip?
Brian read the Rec Department report, so I don't have anything further to add. John and I were going to meet, are going to meet in the next couple of weeks with the guys at the airport. And John has something to do with the sheriff's office. Do you want to comment on that?
Okay, that's better. I couldn't unmute. Yeah, the department is basically going to start an aviation division. And we've talked in committee before about the needs that they're gonna have for hanger requirements, something like that. And we were going to, tend to be set for Thursday, but of course with the death of Officer Bain, I'm sure we're gonna have to push that back. But we will get together soon and report back to it. It's, it's basically, we're gonna have to build a hanger for, for their equipment, for their machines that ran in. But in the long run, it's gonna be very profitable for the city. Yeah, we'll, we'll be attentive, Phillip, and we'll, we'll report back on that.
Alright, thank you. Just, just another note that we, I guess everybody sees that we're meeting a little bit different today. We've checked with our attorney and our league officials to make sure that this is something that we wanted to do because we're not, we could do. We're not used to it, but we'll be in this format until we get some further information that will allow us to come back together. Rocky, did you have anything you wanted to add to that while we're on that subject, man?
Well, the question would be whether or not it violated the Open Meetings Act in any way. And the governor has made several proclamations, the first one back in April, and the one, well, actually the first one in March and one shortly after that. And she very clearly anticipated the possibility that coronavirus would get so prevalent that we were required to meet in this manner. And we have met all the requirements for meeting in this manner. And we are in good shape, both based on the proclamations that she issued and my consultation with the league municipalities attorney. And Steve Black and Eric at the city have done an outstanding job of putting this together in such a way that meets all the requirements for us to meet virtually under the governor's proclamation.
John?
And of course, you know, I made it no secret that I, I don't like this format. I don't like that the citizens are locked out of the, the input in it. I can understand the COVID part. But I just want to, you know, just, just for the record, I'm against, I'm against this format. You know, I think we could go with the CDC recommendations, the social distance, you know, the mask would be fine. But, you know, I just want to go on record on my opinion.
Thanks, John. Alright, moving right along to item two, which is ordinance as a revolutions. Ordinance 2021, the first ordinance, amending ordinance 2004, 18th ordinance, as it relates to business advertisement on the cafeteria and marquee. This is a first reading. Andy, you studied that. Can you speak to that, please?
Yes, well, as y'all recall, back during the campaign of the previous election, there was an issue about a candidate reading the marquee. And it had been the intent of prior mayors and councils to not allow that. And there was an ordinance passed back in 2004 that addressed that. And that ordinance primarily addressed right of ways, signs, things of that nature on right of ways. But it also included verbiage that says, "Or any city-owned property for political advertising." Then it went on to talk about commercial advertising. Well, businesses have been forbidden from using the marquee ever since this came up. What I did was change section two of the ordinance in 2004 simply to eliminate the verbiage that addressed commercial advertising and leaving everything else in place. Walter brought it to my attention earlier that the, the last section in that ordinance gave the penalties for violation and had wording that included hard labor. You know, it's the typical fine, rocky of violation of a misdemeanor, no more than $500, not exceeding six months in jail. But this one also had hard labor. We can just like that verbiage as well and should be good to go with it.
Well, the, the hard labor part is in, is in all sentencing provisions of all of our ordinances and all misdemeanors in the state and all, and all other provisions of the, well, felonies too is what I'm trying to say. And, and basically, you don't put them to work in hard labor, but it does give you the opportunity, if you choose to do so, to have work groups of inmates who, who can, then you're authorized to let them go out and do street work and that sort of thing, if you want them to and if they want to. So this is not an unusual provision, whether you want to stay in or not, it's, it's just up to you. But that was not something that was an unusual provision. And when you see road gangs, et cetera, that's, that's what that is. And, and my understanding is, is that most inmates appreciate the opportunity to be able to get out. But it's not a big deal one way or the other, whatever y'all want to do.
Could, could we change the terminology and maybe say community service?
Well, you wouldn't want to use the term community service, Walter, because if you use community service, that generally connotes something that they do, something with not in jail. For example, there are, there are provisions which allow youth and homeless people to do community service, but they don't go to jail. The hard labor language is in there for the purpose of allowing them to do the things I talked about. Community service means they're not going to jail, but they have to go work at the ball field for nothing or do this or that or the other for nothing. So that's sort of a term of art. Now, if you're uncomfortable with the term hard labor, we need to find something that doesn't fit in another category. I don't know what it would be off, right off the bat, but we can find some language that said that they could, they could be used. And I don't really know off, off the top of my head, but we can find some language.
Okay, Leon?
I just have a question. I mean, we control what goes on that sign. So who would we want to put in jail for misusing it? I'm a little, I'm a little confused about that. Why, we want to put someone in jail?
I agree.
Well, your ordinance is much wider than the, the marquee at the, at the area. The, the ordinance is actually primarily aimed at people who post commercial signs, people who put yard sale signs on city rideaway all over town. And I would think that it would never, first of all, that's up to the judge. And it would have to be a pretty egregious case before any judge would put somebody in jail for having an illegal sign up unless it was something particularly offensive or had become a habitual problem. So to some extent, you're, you're trusting your city judge to do the appropriate punishment. But that's the case. I, I can't say many cases you're gonna have a $500 fine. And you can do no jail time. And you can say that pollution and this is a, no jail time cases and offense, as opposed to misdemeanor. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things you can do.
Right. And what we have to remember, it's got to be enforceable. We have to enforce it. If we're not gonna enforce it.
Well, that's true. And it has to be, if you take the first step and enforce it, then the second step has to be something where the penalty is such that it deters people from doing it.
I'm okay with the language myself, so.
Okay, this, so this ordinance is not specific to the marquee. It's just, it's a signage ordinance and the marquee is actually called out in that ordinance. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. And it's almost that that marquee was a sign. But then the issue came up about political advertising on it, commercial advertising on it, et cetera. And so that's, that's the way this came up. But the primary aim of the ordinance is people are not putting billboards up on city rideaway or city property to advertise.
Any further discussion on this topic? Now, this is a first reading. We can pick it up at our next meeting. Alright, moving right along to item three, which is board appointments. Applications were accepted for Fort Payne Water and Board and the Fort Payne Improvement Authority through December 29th. Kenneth Larson and John T. Davis serve on the Improvement Authority Board and their current term expired December 31st. Jared Camp serves on the water board and his term expires December 18th. So we have 28 applicants that Tricia needs to notify. And I, for that many people, I think we probably need to have a Saturday meeting to interview them because I can't take off from work that long unless I take a vacation. What's, what's, what's the pleasure of the council? John?
Is, are these 28 new applicants or are these 28 that rolled from the other initial applications we took in back a couple of months ago? But we have, we have actually 28 brand spanking new applicants for these three positions that are out.
Tricia?
We actually have three new ones, the three that are existing board members. And then we had five, the previous ones reapply. So the 18 other ones, I think it was kind of what Open ended in the last meeting. Are they valid for these? Was it, because they didn't come and reapply. So we have three new and five that have reappointed. We actually have eight. But that is up to you guys if you want to make the other ones valid. I just don't think that's clear in my understanding. That's up to you.
John?
I thought we agreed that, and I may be wrong, and I brought this up. I thought we agreed that any appointment would date a new application, is that not right? No?
Leon? Leon?
Ryan? I, I thought we agreed to anyone that wanted to apply for these boards, if they had reapplying, we could still use their application. But they needed to notify the city clerk and let them know that they were interested. They would not have to reapply. They could use the same application. But they were to call the city clerk's office and say that they wanted to be considered for that board appointment. And then anyone new that wanted to apply could do so. That's how I understood it.
Tricia?
And you got eight. There are three new ones and five that were reappointed. So we have 18 of those for the, for the group of positions.
So is it, is it okay, Phillip, you hadn't chimed in, and I know you have some input. Is it okay that we, we set up interviews for the eight, but also notify all 28 that, to make sure that they're interested? So we set up the eight for interviews, but all of the 28 are eligible. Is that correct? Rocky?
The only concern I have, if we're confused about how we were gonna do it, I have great concern that folks out there that are interested are confused about how we're gonna do it. And, and I think the last thing you want is somebody to say, well, I didn't thought, I think I had to interview again. I, I didn't think I had to put in a new application. I, I didn't know that I had to call. And I, I'll be honest, I don't have any clear recollection of where you left it. And I, I don't know. I, I think there needs to be some clear decision about how you're gonna do it and then possibly even extend this thing and do whatever you're gonna do before the next meeting. I mean, you can still interview before the next meeting and make your board appointments for the, at the next meeting, since it doesn't appear you're gonna make them today anyway. But I just have great concerns, not that I think it may make any legal difference, but I just, I just think it creates a possibility of some misunderstanding, hurt feelings and dissatisfaction, and I hate to see that happen. Because y'all are doing, y'all really are making a very concerted effort to make sure that everybody that's interested gets an opportunity.
John?
Yeah, I think we need, I agree with Rocky. I think we need some clarity on it. So I'm gonna put a motion out right now. I'm gonna move, Mr. President, and we let the current board members continue to serve and let's take this up in a work session. Are we, are we having a work session tomorrow or just take it up in a work session?
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Before we get into discussion, do I have a second? I see Rocky's hand flagging over there, but just, you know, do we have a second for that? Okay, Rocky?
I just wanted to make clear that all of those positions do exactly what John's wanting to do already as a matter of law. They continue to serve until a replacement, until either they're reappointed or a replacement is chosen. So John, what you're wanting to do will happen as a matter of law.
Okay. Okay, so can, can we, since we're thinking, and I may be off here, that all, everybody that has applied, that applied in 2020, their applicants will not, their applications will not go into 2021. Is that statement? Is that statement agreeable with everyone? Okay, everybody that applied in 2020, their applications will not go into 2021. So after we deal with, with this subject matter, the 28 will, will cease to be. Okay, so now we go into, are we going to interview the eight? Because we have interviewed the other ones already. Is that correct, Tricia? Okay, so for the 10 minute spot that we give them, I don't know if we can learn any more about those that we have already interviewed, but those that we haven't, that we want to give them the opportunity and have Tricia call them to set up a appointment for that interview. John?
Well, I thought we just, we're not gonna bring these up, bring these into 2021. So basically, we've got eight. Is that right? Is that what you're saying? You're, you're not talking about bringing these other 23 or 28?
Yeah, but they all, they all applied in 2021, all the applicants. Is that correct? Nobody applied for anything in 2021. They all applied in 2020.
Right.
But we got, but we basically got 28.
Yes. We got 28, but, uh, six, eight of the 20 have not been interviewed. Is that correct, Tricia?
Three of these have not been interviewed, have not been interviewed. These are three new ones and five that have been interviewed have reappointed. Three more.
How many people do we need to interview that have not been interviewed?
You had three previously and three new ones this time. If you're going to do, you told 26 people. You've had six people told that have not had a face-to-face interview.
Can we have a motion to interview these six since we've interviewed the rest of them? Lynn?
I make a motion to interview the six.
Motion by Lynn to interview the six people. Second by John. All in favor? Hi, any opposed? Motion carries. So Tricia, you will go ahead and set up. Okay, Lynn, you have something?
Well, I just wanted to add that we, I want to go ahead and decide like John said and set this structure for this year about going forward if we have any more board appointments, how we're gonna handle it.
If there's one appointment coming in 2021, I think we should open up for anybody that wants to apply for those. We should interview them. And that's gonna be it for 2021.
But we will start over.
We will start over is what I'm thinking. Phillip?
I just wanted to clarify. So if we have one appointment in 21, then what we're going to do basically after we finish these three appointments is discard all the applications. And if you want that one board appointment, whatever board it is, you have to reapply. Is that what, is that what y'all, is that the understanding? Okay, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, any other comments? So there's a motion and second on the floor. Have we voted? Did we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries for Tricia to go ahead and set up the six people to interview. Uh, can we do that on a weekday? Shouldn't take us long to do the sixth, correct? Okay, Tricia, what day, what pleasure? Next week? Thursday?
So for you guys.
Can I pull this Wednesday out of there? Don't you want to do it?
They put that, perfect.
Next Wednesday, we will interview the sixth candidate. All right. Moving right along. Okay, go ahead. Um, I saw Phillip's hand, then I saw Lynn's hand.
What time is that?
Uh, we usually started early when we had a lot of them, but we, we need to be in that time slot where we can be back to work, right Phillip? So we're saying 10 o'clock maybe? No, I need to go 14 because I have a meeting yet. Next Wednesday, I have a meeting. Oh, next Wednesday, I got a deal appointment. It's 11. Crap. Uh, can we do a earlier?
Yep.
What time, John?
Uh, eight o'clock, finally.
Eight o'clock? First for me. Phillip shaking his head. Lynn? Eight o'clock next Wednesday interviewing six individuals. All right. Good discussion. Moving along to new business. Um, I report is the budget to discuss, discussion about passing, uh, 2020 budget along with facility closures. Uh, there, there's, there's two items that, that on this budget that I think could cause our vote today to go one way or the other. And it is the discussion around, uh, the funds that we're going, that we're looking at, um, appropriating to employees, whether it be their coal raises, whether it be their insurance benefit or adjusting salaries. I know we only, we only got so much money we can actually move around. So maybe that discussion deserves, that topic deserves a little bit more discussion. And then the second one was around appropriations. We don't know if we've gotten that just right, so we need to talk about that some more. So I was wondering if there's any way we could take those two out of the budget and pass the budget. Rocky, somebody that knows that we can do that or not, and, and they take these other two subject matters offline until we figure it out and then come back and amend the budget to put them back in?
If I understand your question. Your question is can you pass the budget on a partial basis? So that certain expenditures and certain expenses are approved at this point? You can do that. And then come back and fill out the budget later, but that does not fulfill your obligation of ultimately, um, passing the budget for the entire city. So you, you are still in the situation where you haven't passed the total budget yet. And I just say that because you can't let it fall through the cracks if that's what you do. But yes, you can, you can approve a, a portion of the budget and then say, we're still working on some other items. Um, you just, and, and I'm not sure exactly what you're speaking of. Not aggressive, but i- i- it's gonna be very difficult then if you want to go back in and change some of the items and what you passed, if you decide to do something different with what you have up the side. Can you part, pass part of it? Yes. A- a- as a practical matter, is that easy to do? And the answer is no, it's not easy to do. And I can't tell you for sure it's gonna work, but legally you could pass part of it and then address those issues that are not either approved or disproved pretty quickly without effecting.
Andy?
Walter, it's like you and I were talking previous about this. The process that, that we have to do, Tricia and I have to do is probably installing the budget in the accounting software. You can install a piece of it. It's either all or none. Which means that you can operate, I mean, we can still operate just as we've been operating since October without a past budget. But as far as the terminology you're using about passing a budget, that's meaningless from our point of view because I cannot install in the accounting software a piece of a budget. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Um, Phillip?
Andy, is that the new software or the old software?
That's, that's the existing software, Phillip. Or you, I, I've got it in, in, the order is placed and all that, but that's gonna be a a process to install it. It's not about, if you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
You bet. So, um, Councilman Phillip Smith has, he's really put a lot of time into this budget. Uh, and we can vote on it today or, I'm thinking needs a little bit more work done on those two items that we're talking about. Appropriations and, sorry, I saw Rocky's hand. Go ahead and get John first to come from the council side to give some input. John, go ahead.
Phillip, you want, do you, you want to have a work session tomorrow to finalize it? No, I, I'd like for it to keep going, keep dragging out. I mean, we need a work session. I'm good with that. Just whatever y'all want to do. Get it settled.
Okay. Uh, Phillip, Rocky, I'm gonna come to you. Let me let these guys talk a little bit. Go ahead, Phillip.
I s- I still think there's some questions, uh, specifically about appropriations that you talked about that, um, that we need to iron out in a work session. I mean, the budget needs a lot of work. And to pass part of a budget is basically not passing a budget at all. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Lynn?
I just, my, the important thing to me is to allow the department heads to continue to do their jobs. And so I'm, I'm with John. If we need to do a work session, that's fine. We, I, I'm available to do that tomorrow as well. I just think it's important that we, we get it done because I hear so many things from department heads saying, has the budget been passed? Has the budget been passed? Um, because they don't really seem to know how to operate without it being passed. So I agree that there is a lot of work or a good bit of work. I think we can iron it out hopefully in a work session tomorrow. But I'm not willing to pass it until those things are ironed out.
Great, John?
Yeah, I agree with Lynn. I, I, I think there's a little confusion and, and there's some questions on the appropriations and, and I, I, I just, I agree with Lynn. I think we will have a work session.
Okay, Rocky?
Well, I was just going to say that Phillip and Andy and Lynn and John all articulated better. What I was trying to say is that there was nothing illegal about approving a portion of that budget. But in fact, you haven't passed the budget when you do that. If, that you, if you're gonna do something today, you'd be better off passing the budget than then amending it. But I think it's far, far better just to wait and then get the budget like you want it and then, and then pass it. But it's not illegal to pass part of it.
Okay, Mayor?
I do agree with, I think the sooner the better that we get this thing passed. Because if you'll, uh, remember, this year actually started in October. So we're three month, three months into this fiscal year. So our department heads, they need that budget. And as soon as we get that, uh, passed and put forward, that's about it there, I think. So I agree with doing a work session tomorrow.
Okay, Tricia?
What parts are you needing me numbered wise for for tomorrow's meeting? Like what parts, you mentioned the COLA, um, appropriations? I mean, what are you needing me to bring the meeting for? To look at?
But it's up to these guys to discuss. What, what I'm thinking, uh, we, Tricia, you're not figuring that. What we budgeted was around $420,000 for employee, uh, which included COLA and probably their insurance increase. Also, we've asked the mayor and that team to look at salary adjustments. Okay, so we can't do all of those things. We have the biggest use of which ones we want to do. So hopefully that will be on the table to be discussed. And then also of the $800,000 appropriation, uh, I think we knocked it down to like 500,000, but I think there's some concerns from the council uh, that maybe, maybe want to do some final, uh, some more appro, some more adjustments on that. So the bottom line of the budget, I think we came in at a positive 168. Was that? So we came in a positive 168, uh, to, uh, to the actual budget. So, uh, tomorrow at 12, go ahead Phillip.
Is the positive 168, Tricia, is that after the changes were made in the appropriations?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Everything that was discussed at the last work session. Yes.
Okay, so tomorrow, um, Lynn, John, Phillip tomorrow at 12:30. Does that work for you? Are you on the earlier or what are you thinking? Phillip?
It's gonna take a lot longer than an hour and a half.
Yep.
We're going for a Saturday. It's gonna take that long, John?
It's good. Do the first thing in the morning if you want to. Give us all day. Can, can, can y'all do that?
See, it's, it's hard for me to break away for all day. Um, with, unless I take a vacation day. So all days for me is gonna be Saturday. So we have to break it up and we break it up into, because I agree with Phillip. I'm thinking the whole time, I don't know if we can get it done tomorrow or not, not in entirety. So, Phillip?
I'm good with Saturday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Lynn?
I'm good with Saturday as well.
John?
Um, I'm not on this Saturday. I've got a call and I'll be, I'll be at work. There's no way I can, I can do it Saturday.
Lynn?
Could we do it at night? I mean, I know it makes for a late night, but could we do it one night? Or John, do you work at night?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I can switch my schedule around. I just can't do it on a, when I'm covering call, like on the weekend. I mean, I could do it. I can, I can change my schedule around and meet whenever you want to. Um, other than a call week, which I'm on call solid to sleep.
Okay, I can do a meeting anytime after 3:30 and I can stay with you until midnight. So 3:30 is my time or was that a five, Lynn, or you got your hand raised?
I have my hand raised.
Okay.
As being that you want food if you're gonna stay that long.
Are we gonna do it via Zoom or are we gonna meet person? Phillip?
I think we need to meet personally together.
Okay. So tomorrow, are we saying still tomorrow at four? Lynn?
I have faith John can work to do it tomorrow, can you, John? Because you're on call all week.
Well, I can work, I can work days tomorrow and, uh, man, I'd be subject to having to leave. You know, leave me. There's no way around it. Th- th- this week, you know, either way, I'm, you know, if I can't do it mornings, I, I would be here until something happens. I may, I may have to leave the meeting, but I mean, that's a chance we take.
Okay, Phillip?
Are you good with that, John?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'll, in my opinion, if I have to leave the meeting, I just have to leave the meeting. The chances are, chances are not great, but I mean, they're always there.
But you're willing to take the chance?
Yeah, yeah. Four o'clock tomorrow, it's fine.
Okay, a meeting at four o'clock tomorrow to continue discussions on the budget. Do we need a motion for that or we just do it? You just set a meeting for tomorrow at four? Tricia?
Yes, the same time.
Good one?
Where do you want to set it at? Here? City hall?
Yes.
You know, we got chairs up there.
Never heard it before.
Upstairs or downstairs?
Where does the council is? Upstairs or downstairs? Upstairs. Go ahead, John.
Well, I just say it, it, it'll be up in the building, I'm sure. So we may have to leave downstairs anyway.
Okay, we're opening it up to the public. And we're not gonna have a Zoom meeting. So we're opening up to the public. We've already said that we have to have, we're having this meeting because of COVID. We opened up to the public. They come, we're back to square one again. So we, we're gonna have to go Zoom meeting. John got his hand up.
Well, I'm just saying, if we have a public meeting, it'll have to be up to the public, right?
Right.
So, yeah.
Phillip, did you have your hand up or were you saying God, I'm gonna go over it pretty quick?
I'm just saying, if we have a public meeting, that it's an automatic, the public's gonna be able to participate, right?
Yes.
Yep.
So to do that, we need to have a Zoom meeting to stay in line of what we're doing now, Phillip?
Define participation.
What we are doing now?
No, I mean the public participating. What does that mean?
Present.
They're allowed to come listen to us do the work, that's basically what it is.
There's attorney got his hand up, so I I I'm sure asking him.
And I I think I sent all of your memo, I tried to send all of your memo this morning. With regard to the governor's proclamation. Participation is not required by the governors. Um. They they need to be, they 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 either need to be able to view it. They need to be able to. See it, each of you has to be able to hear and talk to the other one like they're doing today. And there's an order before participation, so the governor has. Uh, understood that there's possibility that there will not be participation. Um. And the 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 odds on there being very much. Attendance tomorrow night, I would think would not be high, not on a budget meeting. But you've had a couple of budget meetings before and other than, I don't think other than the news. That there's been more than one or two people there. Uh, so but the fact that you had that wouldn't. The the fact that you decided to have that meeting in person as opposed to this meeting, which you didn't. Doesn't have any effect on having the next meeting of the council like this because you have far more. People and it would be much easier to have social distancing et cetera. Uh, if you did it in the big room upstairs, so you you've got a lot of options. You can set up something like this, you can meet in person. I would meet upstairs so that if more than four or five people showed up, you can have them spaced. And then each of you can be behind. On the shield and and hopefully spaced enough from each other and wearing masks. Uh, it's it's a difficult situation to know how to handle, but uh. Uh, in the past, most of the budget meetings have just taken place downstairs and I don't know if other than. Department heads and employees, you've ever had very many, and Andy could probably answer that better than I do.
Okay, I know I know item four and we're about to about to wrap this discussion up hopefully is is actually talking about facility closures also, so. And and this, the reason we're having this is because we're closing the facility, so can we? Can we try it with this with a go to meeting call? Or do we just wanna, let's try it with a go to go to meeting call to stay in line of what we're trying to do? And then if we saw that didn't work. Uh, maybe we can do something, but I I think I think we can work through it because I I feel like you guys are here. Uh. Uh, we're just not sitting together, so if. If that's agreeable, everyone, let's just go with the go to meeting call tomorrow at four P M.
But just one other thing, if I may, Walter, just make sure that whatever discussions that there is some summer. Post it on our website within within twelve hours of the M, I think it's tomorrow night, if you post it by eight o'clock the next morning or. Ten o'clock the next morning, you'll be okay. The main thing to to be assured of is that the public, if they want to know what happens, can.
Can Eric? We worked with FPTV and our local IT guy to make this available to the public via FPTV streaming. Can that? I know FPTV is not gonna make that available for us, can we provide that service? Uh, that's a question for Eric, can we provide that service for the general public to participate? Via go to meeting? Uh, somebody's handing it out and then Fish, there's Andy, okay?
Let's contact you while you're finishing up the agenda, we'll trace your power here and see if he can make that up.
Okay. All right, sounds good, uh, good discussion, um, we're waiting for some response from them. Item five on the agenda is street naming, discussion about renaming Ruby Tuesday Lane. Uh, I I think they're gonna rename it, but the name hasn't been determined yet, is that right, Andy?
I think the mayor addressed that.
Fine?
Yes, I was, uh, at the same place the other day and I was approached by the manager, owner, whatever. And, uh. Since Ruby Tuesday is is gone, uh, they have requested getting a name changed to that street. Uh, what that is, I don't know, uh. I've got some suggestions. Something to think about, but they just wanted that name changed since Ruby Tuesday, there's no other way.
Did they suggest? A name?
No, there was not a name suggested, uh, by them.
Okay, we're we're not gonna go with Bain Lane, are we?
I think that was, uh, kicked around several around here at City Hall.
Rocky?
We could do Ruby Tuesday Memorial Lane since they're dead.
Well, I think we'll, right now, both of those names are probably not gonna make it, Lynn?
I just ask that we not tie it to any business or anything again.
Okay, all right, so Mayor, you'll you'll get you'll keep us posted on where that goes? So what's the? What's the pleasure of the council on renaming this thing? Said not from Lynn?
No, I'm sure.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Give your polls. Motion carries for the renaming. Go. Okay, um. Andy did just text me and says I can stream it if needed. So he can stream tomorrow's meeting. Tomorrow Zoom. So I guess we'll go with that. So speed of your listening, um, we will probably need you to do that for us, I'll get with you after the meeting, so. Tomorrow, budget meeting four o'clock, Zoom, it will be streamed live, so we meet the requirements of the government. All right. Mayor's report.
Okay, this this will be shortened sweet, uh. As I stated earlier about the demolition of the old hospital, I have a meeting set up with, uh, Sarah James with Tarkog. And James Payton with Lab Engineering, uh, next week. To discuss the, uh, the grant process, where we go from here. We also, Nathaniel and Steve will be in town on Thursday of this week at ten thirty. Uh, they want to meet us there at the site, they're bringing a deck of directors kind of Boswell. With them, uh, to to hear our plans, I I've reached out to James, he will be there. Uh, any of y'all are welcome to to be there at that meeting, uh, I think it's just to get overview of where we're at on the project. And so then next week, like I said, I'll be meeting with Sarah James with Tarkog and, uh, James Payton. To finalize the next steps of the, uh. Grant process. You'll notice in the mayor's report, uh, you should have a copy of that. Uh, of the, we had a. Uh, status change from full time to part time in nine one one. We had a probationary education pay adjustment in the fire department. And we also, uh. Hired our police chief David Davis, so that's that's the only personnel.
Mayor, Mayor, that personnel, that education pay adjustment, what was that? For?
That was a, uh, a degree that. A gentleman had to further his education or. To affect his his job title there at the fire department.
Okay, this this is a new. This is something new, right? All right, I'm gonna answer, it's a, uh, for to be a chaplain?
Yes. Yes, the chaplain of the fire department.
Okay, so, uh, I think this this will be the first for the city of Fort Payne, so I'm not sure how many other departments will follow suit. Uh, saying they need a chaplain also, so, um. We may we may see that coming, but, um. Okay, any other questions about any of the mayor's report? Any questions? Now Rocky's got his hand up.
I I've got one thing, I have a little bit to the mayor's report, Mayor. I need for you to get with former Mayor Chester about who he talked to about forgiving the state taxes on that property. So that we can obtain it from the bank where the hospital is?
Yes, I I already actually talked with Tyler Wilks, uh, on that issue, so I'll get with you.
Okay, and then I will contact the bank. And then. If if we're through the mayor's report, I before we leave, I need to get one more hearing set up from. The council, you just tell me when you're ready, Walter.
We're ready.
Okay, uh, I have been exchanging, uh, MOU language with, uh, Jason Grimick. From Grempert Development, uh, the language is practically ready. Uh, we're gonna run this through seven seventy two to get a new rate charter and create new sales tax. But we have to have a hearing and we have to publish notice in the paper of that hearing, so I would ask you. Uh, to to have a motion to second, to set that hearing on February the sixteenth. Uh, which is the second meeting in February, I know we can have the. Notice run by then and then, uh, we'll have the hearing that day and then immediately petition record after that.
Mayor's hand or motion?
I go.
Motion by John?
Second.
Second by Lynn, all in favor? Say aye? Give your polls. Motion carried, Andy's got one finger up, go ahead and.
Oh, Rocky, is there a a time by which that has to be advertised? You know, like on on rezoning and vacation vacation of unopened alleys, it's got to run like fifteen days prior to the vote, is there anything?
This one has to, this one has to run three weeks, uh, which is usually eighteen days. Uh, and, uh, I I'm working on that, I'll have it to you this week, we'll have it planned nine forty six time.
Bye.
All right.
Okay, we're getting close to Phillip's alarm going off, so we want to get him out of here in time enough so he can. Be his next task, uh, Mayor, do you have any report on Joe's truck stop project? We have anything from the D O T on that?
I do mind, uh, I plan to reach out to, uh. John Cooper. And discuss further on the project that we had talked about, uh, right before Christmas. Maybe taking the overpass out, see if we could just fix Joe's truck stop with this, uh, phase. Then bring in the the overpass that interlayer plays. If I have a take from from E or, uh, Curtis Benson, I will, uh, pass it along.
Okay. Project on the sports complex, are we moving forward on that, Andy, making any progress?
Yes, Tim, Tim and his guys, uh, Public Works is. Getting further on that process, uh, we're reaching out to some, uh, different soccer folks to to get a. A soccer person to lay that out and get that, uh, in motion.
Uh, Lynn?
I just ask that you, uh, include the committee and maybe, you know, Rob and and some of that discussion.
Yes.
Yes, please do that. Okay, um, I don't think we have any more business, um, this was maybe. Um, thought to be complicated, but I think you guys did an excellent job. Thanks for everything that you've done this past year and continuing to hammer these. These abrupt interruptions and and of course, this is one, but I think we handled it well. So thanks a lot, team, for your continued work and let's keep our hands to the plow, let's keep Johnny held up. And pray he's doing better, uh, hopefully he'll be back with us maybe in February toward the end of that month, so. Is there any further business to discuss today? If not, Lynn?
I was just gonna make the question to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Lynn to adjourn. Second by John. We'll see you guys tomorrow at four, uh, our blessed evening.